Okay. We're going to get the meeting started again, so please be quiet, thank you. Okay, now, what are we on here? We're at New Business. A, receive a presentation from board members of Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives, or AHA. Please come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Nezzi Wade and the president of the Board for Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives. And AHA is here tonight to invite you to enter into a partnership to create a pilot tiny house village in Arcata in the Alderpoint Industrial Park. The village is modeled after Opportunity Village in Eugene, Oregon. Andrew Heben, co-founder and urban planner, who has successfully pulled that off in Eugene, and it is being implemented across the country in many places. Tiny House Villages offer a new paradigm for what would be considered bridge housing, or emergency bridge, or interim housing, that is much more economically accessible and also ecologically sustainable. In late 2014, we brought Andrew here from Oregon and held a community forum in Eureka at the Women's Club and had 250 participants who were very excited about the idea of tiny house villages. And the sentiment overarching was that something like this should be available throughout Humboldt County. So our focus has always been on a county-wide kind of approach, because it's something that's needed in every community to accommodate our lack of affordable housing, particularly for people that have few resources, are homeless. AHA's vision is that everyone has a human right to a safe, legal place to live, and our mission is to provide information, education, advocacy, and policy development for affordable housing alternatives with the homeless in Humboldt County, and to facilitate the implementation of these models by networking with private groups, nonprofits, public agencies, religious organizations, and individuals. We have been working for several years since we began organizing, prior to becoming a nonprofit, finding out who the stakeholders are, and working with them across the board. We have held open community conversations for the past two years at St. Vincent de Paul in Eureka with those who have been experiencing homelessness and the larger community to discuss affordable camps to village alternatives, safe parking, and as an integral part of community, what that might look like and what people would want. In our conversations, we've discussed simple community agreements. You have a packet that is for this presentation tonight, and in there are some sample operations, procedures, and also the community agreements. We've gone over basic operating rules, types of dwellings, from tents to tiny house designs that are potentially on or off the grid, and we've had engineers meet with some of the folks that are living outside, and Michael can talk a little bit more about that later. Those that are living homeless are witness to the effectiveness of village life, and their wisdom is included in our proposals and our projects, because they have taught us the best practices about living in a community. They know what that's like. They've been living outside rough and in encampments for a long time. In 2015, September, AHA held a tiny house expo. Over 700 people participated, and they came to see the demonstration on how a sanctuary camp can morph into a tiny house village. We had lots of other options for how people can accommodate themselves when they are homeless in affordable ways. But here, we had also the CCC set up a field kitchen to demonstrate how easy it is to have safe and easy sanitation and food services, as well as storage for a large number of This is a graphic from the Village Collaborative, or the Sanctuary Camp for Andrew Heben's graphics. You can see that this is sort of what we would consider our Phase One of the village, because people need to live in place. So there are tents in clusters, as houses would be, tiny houses would be in clusters with a central facility, and food preparation area. There's porta-potties and dumpsters at the entrance, also a gate check-in and checkout. There's also sanitation, hand washing stations. This is near a bus stop, which is one of the amenities for a site. AHA's meme is "Safe, Warm, and Dry First." It's kind of the housing first concept. Excuse me. Our project model facilitates those experiencing homelessness, particularly chronic homelessness, getting into immediate affordable, safe camping and village programs. The emphasis is on building community and getting potential residents into safe, healthy conditions where they can begin to stabilize and thrive and recover from the trauma of being homeless, as well as other trauma, and be supported in the highest level of independence possible. The village would be co-managed between the oversight with the nonprofit and the residents who would be exercising independence in their decision-making. There would be a council, that would be the village council, that would meet once a week, and residents would be required to participate. As the tiny houses are developed, they will allow each resident the privacy and autonomy that we all need for gathering ourselves together, and a safe place also to keep their belongings. But the security of having a door and being able to lock it is something that actually allows for people to rest for the duration. In addition, no one would be on-site without there being knowledge of that. Everyone has to be approved, and it's important that we maintain the security for the sake of the residents, and it's like any other gated community. The communal setting and positive social support from peers and the shared responsibilities for the environment, the community, and the use of common facilities brings people into community life in a way that encourages integration and brings interdependence and a sense of mutuality and trust. They're responsible. It's their home. It's their environment. The goal for AHA, for the village, would be to facilitate access to opportunities for as many as possible for all residents, whether it's healthcare, medical, mental or physical, social services, skill development, education, training, entrepreneurship, micro businesses, job placement, or just being part of a healthy, thriving, supportive community. County-wide, I mentioned was our vision. The village model, by design, by its very nature, is a recovery kind of environment that will prevent and mitigate the negative consequences or outcomes of experiencing homelessness for those that have been chronically homeless. The village, as I said, would be co-managed, and you have an example of the community agreements. We have a basic set of rules that we have actually vetted or have been informed about from those people who have lived in communities that have been homeless. So AHA would be the contractor with the city and for the other services, while residents would be self-regulating and required to participate in the meetings, where any issues that arise would be processed for resolution, because self-governance is a core value of the community. To build a village, we would be working with local contractors and community members. The village responsibilities would be those of the community members, and there are many tasks from maintaining the entrance and visitors to recycling and garbage, security, tool maintenance, and so on. The human scale of this development is really what's the most important thing here, because it can be carried out within a local level and a local community level. And it's kind of a grassroots model for developing low-cost housing without the dependence on government subsidy. So nobody's asking you for a lot of money. They're asking you for, we're asking you for, your support in having a space and working with us to accomplish some of what would be required to get that site prepared, and so on. AHA encourages everyone to read Andrew Heben's book. If you haven't, it's really very good, and he's a great author. But the tiny house village provides a path for people to get out of homelessness, and it's intended really as alternative. He writes of the tiny house village not only for the original residents, who are people trying to get people on a pathway out of homelessness into community, but it's also for seeking alternatives to conventional housing options, because the alternatives can reduce human impact and can increase sustainability, and we can focus on building community rather than other options. Okay, so we have built a few houses. These are not those houses, but this is kind of a view of what the community would look like once established. This is a graphic, again, of what a transitional community would be. So the tents have been replaced by tiny houses in a central facility that's a yurt, and the gardens remain. This is a site map of what would be the parcel in Alder Grove. The street on this side would be Erickson Way, where the arrow comes in is one driveway. There's a road adjacent, or a drive adjacent to this parcel, but you can see. I don't think I can do this. Let me see. Maybe I can. Oops, no. Whoa. Okay. That isn't going to work, but I can show you.
These are all, this is the gathering place, kitchen, baths, recreation area, working area. These would be restrooms, a gate, and office.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they can't hear you.
Okay. Well, all the clusters of little houses would be the same. This is a little bit, just a demonstration of all emergency sleeping cabins that are oriented, it says there, towards south, southwest, to capture most of the sunshine on the site. Now, we have visited the site, and we've been studying it over the winter. And we are very aware, and there'll be an overhead in a minute, but through these wet weather days, we realized that this site is subject to flooding. And the roadway is much higher than the ground, so that there's a lot of water there that would need to be mitigated prior to being utilized as a project site.
How, is that one acre? Is that what that is about?
Yeah, it's about that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks. These are just, there's a garden scene here too, somewhere. Yeah. And all kinds of projects could be possible. Oh, wait, there's something missing. Nope, that's it. Okay. Well, there is something missing here, though. There you go. So why does AHA have the capacity to develop a tiny house village? We've been studying it for a long time, and we have lots of great consultants and people across the country who are eager to help us proceed, and lots of local support in terms of volunteers and our board expertise. We've also got connections with suppliers and with businesses who would really like to see this proliferate throughout the county. But Arcata is a perfect place because of the ethics and the values that are core to Arcata, being successful in other very innovative projects. We figure this is a really good opportunity. Our board expertise, we have lots of very talented individuals, who, a few of whom have very expertise in lived experience of homelessness in encampments and on the street, extreme poverty, and commercial property management, as well as shelter operations, legal services, program development, including employment programs, engineering and contracting, housing development and implementation, and street outreach, and each member has an extensive network of resources and support. We also have experience in building houses, and we have a lot of service partners that are in place. Arcata House Management is willing to do case management for the village, and we also have connections because of being a member of the Housing and Homeless Coalition for a number of years now, and also we have DHHS and other services that we would rely on. So each resident would have a transition plan or a service plan. And again, we would like to call on Arcata, on the council, the city, to be a pioneer and our partner in creating a pilot project based on your environmentally innovative values, and we'll come back to that. What we need is land and the political will to do that.
So, my name is Mike Avkali. I'm also a board member of the Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives. I would like to just thank citizens of Arcata, city council, and staff for being here and letting us present tonight. I'm just going to jump back to this slide about construction of what is labeled a detached bedroom or a tiny home. So as Nezzi mentioned, we have already built a couple of prototype homes in our preparation for taking on a project like this. AHA's been in consultation with HSU students and engineering classes up there to work on heating and lighting systems. I'm one of the students. That's how I got involved.
Maybe talking to the mics, so people can hear you.
I'm one of those students, and that's how I got involved in this project.
So you're not blinded?
That. Thank you. That is exactly what was happening. And we've also partnered with Engineers Without Borders to develop wastewater treatment strategies for this project. One of the things we knew when we were working on this as a student group is that we had to maintain low-cost options for the project. This is a rough example of some of the costs, that we were able to try to stay under $5,000 for the material costs for one tiny home. Now, part of that is a simple shell constructed mostly of two-by-fours and plywood. We put a lot of technology into our thermal solutions to try to keep these buildings warm. We also came up with some electrical solutions, both off-grid and grid-connected, for the buildings. And, again, a rough budget for one house. We tried to come under $5,000, and you can just see it extrapolated out, for the potential of six or 12 houses. So, design concerns. I'm just going to go back to what we were thinking of when we worked on these plans. It was to keep the residents of the houses warm, safe, and dry, which was a big challenge. We got a chance to interview a lot of people who were living on the streets in Eureka and Arcata, and one of the things we learned is that these folks reported that they were never dry. It just was unachievable, living on the streets. When we thought about that, we realized that in these tiny homes, moisture buildup could be a really big problem, so while we might be able to get them out of the weather and keep bulk moisture off of them, humans are a big source of moisture within a building. And so we were very concerned about that, that, you know, quality of the habitation was really important to us. So we can, those were some of our major concerns. A base design, we thought we should have always try to achieve maximal thermal performance, use standard materials that could be found easily that would maintain our cost. We also added a layer of value engineering where we thought about alternative materials, natural building, volunteer labor, and other things that could really help us control costs. Those were, again, some more of the concerns of some of the design teams. Now I hit the cursor. I'm sorry about that. And maybe it will go away. Maybe it won't. No, no, I froze it. Thank you. So this is a scale drawing of one of the tiny homes that was built. It was built out at the Blue Ox Facility in Eureka. You can see that this is just a little bit bigger. The footprint of it is just a little bit bigger than a sheet of plywood, eight feet by 10 feet and under nine feet tall. Some of the details, you'll see it was two-by-four framing in the roof, in the walls, and in the flooring, but we did think about adding layers of insulation. California Building Code will require R-15 for wall insulation. We did our best to try to provide that level of thermal protection. We thought a lot about keeping bulk moisture out of the buildings while still letting the internal moisture of the residents wick or breathe out and to be able to communicate out. And so some of the details you'll see here are layering different vapor barriers and insulation layers. And again, the engineering students were trying to use the best building sciences available to do the most we could with very little resources. So that was a wall section. This is a floor section. Again, a very minimal construction, but you see, we thought about six mil plastic on the ground to keep vapor from mitigating up into the buildings. They would be built on pressure-treated skids as a foundation. That's not the best, but it allows them to be picked up on a forklift and moved and put in place for a village that may be a temporary facility. A lot of the thought behind these houses are that they are not always going to be the most permanent source of housing. Our site might not always be a permanent home for these tiny homes, so they need to be mobile. Again, spray foam insulation on the floor acts as a vapor barrier and helps to keep the house warm. More than keeping them warm, safe, and dry, we had electrical needs. We knew that these residents need to be, and one saying was, "Charged, lit, and connected." And again, the connected came out of interviews with people who were living on the streets. Their need to stay connected for job interviews, for maintaining their relationships with other people in their community, was largely based on their phone, like everyone else, of course. That's not surprising. But their ability to charge the phone is greatly limited compared to yours and mine. So that's part of keeping them connected. There are two ways you could do this with a small, not even a micro solar. This is what we would call a Pico solar system. So the students that worked on this designed around Arcata's solar resource. They tried to pick an ideal tilt for solar modules that would be installed, and they had a basic set of loads that they designed around, basically keeping one LED light on, an exhaust fan to keep moisture from building up inside the fan and to maintain air, or inside the house, to maintain air quality, and also phone charging capabilities. And that is a relatively high-priced option, and I think our original budget was around $700, and we realized that may not be available or feasible. And another way that you can get electrical needs met is if there was an electrical connection at a central facility. If there was an electrical connection at a central facility, theoretically, at a much cheaper option, residents could have a 12-volt battery that could be charged at the central facility and then brought back to provide electrical services at the tiny house. So that was another option, and a lower-cost option than providing a small solar array. So now, I am going to hand this over to Edie Jessup, another member of AHA.
So how's all this going to work? I'm going to kind of go through it again so that you can have a better idea of how operations would work for the village. So building community is really the focus of AHA's commitment with the homeless, and will accomplish that by co-managing the village, AHA as the nonprofit, working with the residents. Residents will participate in community agreements about living in the village, in maintaining the village, and participating in programs. The village will remain cost-effective to run and cost-effective for residents with sliding-scale fees. Volunteers are committed to investing time and materials to both construction and to leading programs. Service providers are committed to engaging on-site. AHA has drafted an operations manual, and there's a draft of that in your packet, covering the essential issues AHA understands as necessary to create and sustain a village. Oops, wrong way. So the management of the village by AHA will be based on site agreements with the owner of the property, which, if it happened to be the city of Arcata, we would make agreements with you about how that would work, and by AHA agreeing to be the responsible for the facility and other standard contract provisions as needed. The village will be based on low-barrier admission. There will be an application form, needs assessment, medical assessment, and all residents must abide by the community agreement also in your packet. AHA is committed to a village security plan that benefits the residents, the neighbors, and the larger community. AHA plans to allow pets, providing kennels, vaccinations, licensing, and training as needed. Oops, I'm sorry. So the operations budget, the AHA Village operations budget is lean for a year-long operation with 30 people on-site. It provides for two full-time employees and two trained volunteers, so that there is 24/7 oversight of the village. Utilities, phones, have been costed at $7,700 per year, and immediate common facilities will be rented at first to provide sanitation, common meeting space, eating space, and office area. Supplies, signage, materials, et cetera, are minimal as we anticipate donations to cover most of these expenses. We've budgeted for transportation through bus vouchers and assume a bus stop near the site so residents can get to appointments and to work. Insurance has been costed by our carrier, and we assume a 10% administrative cost. So the total cost for a year's operation would be somewhere around $90,000. For 30 residents, the fees would be around $3,000 a year for a resident, or $60 a week. And that would mean that in the second year, operations would be nearly self-sustaining. In order to keep the costs very low, the village would depend on partners to provide services that we need. AHA is, so food is an essential attribute of the village, and we are part of Food for Peoples Nonprofit Network, which allows us to purchase food at a low-cost-per-pound price. We would assure that residents who were eligible for CalFresh were connected with that possibility for food, and we have a plan for a community garden that would help feed the residents. Arcata House Partnership has agreed to provide case management and support to us for this endeavor, as well as the county for case management and Open Door and DHHS Mental Health Outreach Programs agree to onsite services. Resident programs will be based upon the needs that the residents identify themselves, and all will participate in weekly community leadership meetings. Harm reduction is the program model regarding addiction that the village will use, and as AHA grows the village from tents to detached bedrooms, AHA has commitment from volunteer builders and contractors, and will engage the residents in that building. So how will we fund such an operation? We have lightly engaged in fundraising and applied for numerous grants. The grant providers have all said that they would be interested in funding the village, but only after we have a site secured. We anticipate grant funding sufficient to get the village up and running year one. AHA will help residents access monthly income that they're entitled to, and when appropriate, assist with work readiness. We have a lot of in-kind donations promised to the village from local businesses and volunteers. In the second year, we anticipate being eligible for federal funding for operations, and this income projection would cover $92,000 in expenses and is based on our ability to lease a currently undeveloped piece of land for a dollar a year and have the permission to access city services. AHA envisions that within a year, a community of 30 formerly homeless residents will thrive and be good neighbors. So we hope that's what it looks like. We have contacted some of the neighbors at Alder Grove and begun We have contacted some of the neighbors at Alder Grove and begun a conversation with them. We'll be frank, the first conversations have been mixed. However, AHA plans to pursue the discussion based upon our intent on the village being good neighbors. Oops.
Quickly, these images aren't looking as good on this slide, so I'm gonna go up to the screen and point to the parcels in question. Are these two green outlines? Those were the city properties, and this was just a quick scan of GIS information available from the county's website, and it shows red line is the county bus HTA line, with the blue dot being a bus stop very proximate to the location. It also shows city boundary in pink, and the blue line running through is City of Arcata's transit system, so it will allow residents to be connected to transit. Another thing that we looked at, the red triangle is a utility transformer, so there is also power available at the site. That's just a cursory review of resources available, but we found that encouraging.
We didn't say this before, but because we'll have, because we'll have a large number of volunteers, we will also have regular, ongoing volunteer training options for anyone who wants to participate. Then that would, that would involve members of the community assisting in workshops or coming to learn from members of the community. We expect that that will be something that will happen regularly. AHA's partners, you can see there are some of them up there. St. Vincent de Paul has been very supportive of us in our ability to have a place to meet with people that live outside. Arcata House Partnership, as we mentioned, is intending to provide case management support for us. Food for People, at $19 a pound, we're part of their program for obtaining food, and also we're doing food handling through them. Humboldt Area Center for Harm Reduction, we're also very supportive of each other. We work with the same population often, and Humboldt State University, we've been community partners since we began and have had several interns. We will have seven interns from HSU next semester, from a variety of disciplines, and from community education. And we'll have community action researchers that'll be very busy helping us track the progress of what we do. Humboldt State Student Advocate Alliance are also allies. The Humboldt Edge, Grace Good Shepherd, Humboldt Unitarian Universe Fellowship, Eric Duff, that's just a few, but we have a lot of partners who are willing to help us move this along. And our request for the city of Arcata is to engage with us to create a village for currently homeless, and we remind you that back in February of this year, we wrote to you and applauded you for the high priority goal number nine, which was to, for the housing element, to make amendments and develop some strategies for all housing market levels, particularly in terms of affordability. And the second part of that was to identify incentives and potential sites for low-income housing options inclusive of non-conventional types, like Opportunity Village. We attended the study session in which that goal was developed or discussed, and we're very fortunate, we think, to be here having this conversation with you now, because the next step is maybe a longer, better, more in-depth conversation around what is really possible for the city. Also, the Arcata site that we suggested in Alder Grove, as you know, we've studied and have found that it would need some mitigation. There isn't any reason unless there isn't a possibility of another site, but we would encourage you also to think about another site and start working with us as soon as possible, beginning in January 2018. So we thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have in the spirit of what Arcata has the ability to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, council members have questions?
Yeah, this is, I want to say, a nice coming together of an idea that happened a few years ago when Andrew came here, or came to Eureka, and then we had him here at a community center. It seems like unless we take some action, we're gonna be at this same place many years from now, talking about this. And there's, we have a parcel, parcels, and we have, it looks like, partners that we didn't have before. And maybe fleshing this out a little bit more, making, getting it into a detailed form so we understand what the real costs will be and where we could actually do this, would be a great next step from here. So I support that, and I'd like to see us move forward with some sort of a community discussion, a study session, a plan, that ends up with a plan for us to have some low-cost housing for homeless. And I'm just not seeing any other alternatives out there, so I really am happy that AHA's continued to work on this and is making a presentation that's, you know, I'm impressed with it, but we just did this locally. And anybody that takes the opportunity to see the village in Eugene or like villages can understand how it really works, and when you talk to the population that's there, you say, "Why are you here?" And they say, "Because I'm safe and I've got a place to live." So I guess that's all I have to say at the moment.
Well, it looks like a very interesting presentation. I'm extremely skeptical about the specific proposed site that, I think one thing that's important is if, for people to be independent, is be able to travel on their own. So being much closer to downtown, in an area where people could walk or easily bicycle, I think would be a much better idea than being dependent upon transit. So one area that occurs to me pretty immediately would be in a portion of the Little Lake property adjacent to the proposed dog park. And, you know, if people, for instance, have dogs, the dogs could go there immediately, and people could walk to downtown. So that, that is something, it just seems like an incompatible use to be in industrial area, which we're trying to develop for economic development. So I would be much more inclined if it were, if proposed for the Little Lake property, which you've also been a strong advocate for.
Do you guys have any questions, folks?
I agree with both Councilmember Patino and Councilmember Winkler's comments.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I agree that definitely some more details would be helpful, but I do want to commend you for the level of detail that you've provided. I still need to, you know, dive in and read in, read the full operations manual, but I really appreciate that you provided that to us, because I think it is helpful to kind of get a sense of, you know, what this could really look like. And if it's all right, I just have some questions. I guess you probably knew I had lots of questions. It was the other presentation.
If you want to answer the questions, please do it at the micro, so people at home can also hear the answers, or, you know, hear.
So some of my first questions are around fundraising, and so I definitely understand kind of this catch-22 of chicken or the egg of, do you have the place first to do the fundraising, or, at least from my perspective, my vantage point, seeing that there are, you know, a number of pledges already in place to make that happen. So I recognize that you may not have necessarily done a large fundraising campaign, but given that you've given us some numbers, you know, where are you at in terms of pledges?
Well, as Edie mentioned, our biggest stumbling block, we have, we have lots of possibility, and we've applied for lots of grants, that they said if we had a secure site, it would not be a problem. But because we don't have a secure site, and actually, I'd just like to put a little, interject a little something, finding a site is difficult. Right now, the county is working on finding a site for an emergency shelter, and it's been a nightmare. So you can imagine for somebody like us, how long we've been trying to find a site, but if we had it, the grants that we have applied for would already be ours.
So, but I guess, I guess ballpark, even if you, let's say the site, a site was secured, and you applied for those grants, would that total to the amount that's saying that this is how much it would cost, or would, what other fundraising would need to happen?
We would still need to do fundraising, but yes, that would, that would increase probably very rapidly. We have a lot of people that are just waiting to see what happens. We've been offered, we've been offered funds, but we haven't taken them also, because we didn't want to not make good on them, so.
No, I get that. I think, I think just what's helpful in terms of, you know, recognizing that this would be, you know, public land, and in essence, government subsidy for it, I think it's just helpful to know, kind of, you know, if we were to move forward with something like this, how long would it take to be able to raise those funds?
Well, I think if we use Opportunity Village in Eugene as an example, they had a similar situation, their city council approved a site. And also, by the way, Michael, it's, light industrial sites for these things are not uncommon. They're most, they're considered to be areas where they actually are good, because they're somewhat out of the fray and allow for some modicum of, you know, privacy. And also, they've been very successful at zero police calls and being really good neighbors. In fact, I'll tell you that when we had a conversation with one of the neighbors out there, they said, "Wow, it'd be great to have neighbors, because we've had things stolen from here, because there's nobody who lives here at night. That might be a really good thing." So that was one of the comments, and it, and it works that way, actually. So it's not such a bad thing. That might not be a very good site, there might be a better one, but just to, for your thinking about maybe being an inappropriate place, it actually, there, many of them are actually being placed in those kinds of environments, so.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I just out of curiosity, the federal funding source, you said that in, since the second year, that it'd be possible to be eligible for federal funding. I was just saying in general, I'm skeptical about federal funding right now for housing. I think we all are. But I guess my question was, if you know, if that is a competitive grant process, and who else would be eligible for that type of grant funding, to just get a sense of if other service providers would be competing for those same dollars or not?
Probably not, some of the ones that we would be applying for.
There's federal operational money that, for shelter and transitional housing, that we think that would be, or that I have experience of being funded for something like this. Also, our support from Arcata House Partnership might be, it might be an additional partnership with them for some of, for handling some of that also, and they do have, Darlene has great experience with that.
Absolutely.
I have both detailed budget that I can have you take a look at.
Okay.
Would be happy to get that to you, and honestly, I think that if we do the, the fee schedule that I talked about with 30 residents, that we'd probably be very close to self-sustaining with it.
And also, if we go by the examples that exist, Opportunity Village is able to have 30 to 35 residents. Their costs are about $3 a day per resident. They pay two, and the resident pays one. So they're able to do, because it's an experiment of living with much less in a way that works, because it's communal and a lot of other things, so.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I have a few more questions. I just don't want to forget anything. So, you know, I didn't know, you know, looking at kind of the contract, just briefly, and it talking about, you know, that this would be, you know, a contract between, you know, the city and AHA, but given that there's other service providers that would be involved, I guess I just didn't know if, from these other models, if there's been any recommendations on mediation or conflict resolution, if, you know, service providers are doing work, or there's disagreements on that service delivery, you know, I'm not sure what, I can't think of a specific example.
Most of the time, providers work out their own contracts. That's all I can say.
Okay. And so that would just be with you as the contractor, I guess I just didn't know if that would be, just also clarify it somewhere, but that's just something that came to mind, just in terms of these partnerships. Let's see. And then, given that this is considered transitional housing, and forgive me if that's in here, talking about what the, you know, average length of stay is, or the expectation of...
Transitional housing probably isn't the best word for that. It'd be more like a temporary or interim housing at Opportunity Village and other places where it's been working for a while, so they have some good track record. It's about, the average stay is about nine months. And some people are just a touchstone, I shouldn't say the average, but some people are just, they just use it as a touchstone, and they're gone. But we also are facing a situation where housing is challenging. It's very challenging. So we're anticipating, we've always thought of our project as a housing continuum. So it begins here, where we have an ability to get people just into safe, dry places, a legal camp, for example, and move that along towards a tiny house village, where the structures are permanent, but it's a temporary facility. They can be moved, as Michael said. And then moving that on down the line at some point to something that we really need and is, and remains affordable, like cooperative housing.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then, also just didn't know, you know, in the beginning showing the, like, sanctuary camp idea, so, you know, what is kind of the timeline or vision of, is starting out with tents, and then, you know, when would they be transitioning to tiny homes? Could you speak to that?
It's all different in Opportunity Village. They just spent most of their time preparing the site and building off-site in a modular fashion, and it wasn't until about the eighth month of working on the site and doing all that, that they began to construct the houses.
Okay.
So it, and it can, you can build on-site or off-site. It depends on what kind of facility you have and support you have to do that. It's, it's probably easier to build off-site and bring that than to build on-site and try and move that somewhere.
Got it. Okay. Well, you made it through my questions. Thank you.
Oh, come on, give me one more.
Yeah, well, honestly, I guess I just generally have a question about, you don't have to answer this right away, but the flooding issue, I'm just curious to kind of hear more about that and what that really looks like, but thank you.
Well, yeah, maybe hang here for a little bit, because I have a few questions.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify what we're talking about. So we're talking about those Alder Grove, two lots that the city has, so were you, were you looking to try to get both lots, and are they an acre each?
We, we were only talking about...
One lot.
And the diagram that you saw in our slideshow is actually only for half of that lot, assuming that the other half might be utilized for the utility of what it takes to create the village.
And so, and are you looking for, like, what term lease or something, are you looking for, like...
Well, we mentioned that in order for us to garner the kind of funding that we would really go for, the, the funders would like to see site control for a period of at least three to five years. So that's kind of what it would be.
Okay, and then you mentioned access to city services. And so what I was, I was wondering, are you hoping for, like, free hookup or free services? Or, I wasn't clear about what you're really talking about.
What we, we would have to, we would have to patch into them. And in the, I know, when I was here before, you asked a question about interim services, what you would do for that. We actually asked a neighbor about that, and because he was not clear about the possibility of what could happen, because it's, it's not something, a building that's owned, or the property's not owned by this person, it's a leased situation, that we couldn't get an answer to that. But if we know where they are and we can utilize them, I mean, I don't, I, one of my questions would be, where is, where are the sewer lines, if they are, if there are sewer lines there, where are they?
So just to kind of be able to answer my questions, I think, excuse me, you're wondering where the services are, but... wondering where the services are, but then if you hook up to them, you're thinking that you would pay the bill for that?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's a thought, you know, just, okay, and then there's a hookup.
And it depends on, and we would love to have these conversations and things that we would be able to negotiate with the city and say, you know, you guys do this stuff all the time in Public Works and stuff, how could you help us manage to do that? Not that you would have to take responsibility totally for it, but you're the, you're the ones who know, so. And if you have resources or the ability to, you know, direct them, that would be helpful.
Okay, so you're hoping maybe to get a subsidized hookup? Is that what you just said? I'm just trying to get clear on what, what was kind of the proposal? I mean, and I want to just let you know, I'm in agreement with pretty much everyone's thoughts here.
So if we could bring in a power pole, for example, that would be great, because then it would be right there. I don't know where the power...
That's PG&E, but anyway, yeah.
Right, but, but that's true, it is. But it would still be city property. And so we would need to have the city working with us and understanding, we would need to understand what all that would entail.
Okay. And then, and then you're thinking about 30 residents on that acre? That's what you're kind of, the density that you're thinking of it as?
That's common.
Just wanted to get clarity on that. So then, yeah, so you're thinking three to five years, so you're kind of like, maybe get it set up, it's a tent, maybe some tiny village, but they're all potentially movable? Okay, that helps me understand it a bit.
So that if the city decided that there was something they really wanted to do for economic development there, it wouldn't preclude you from being able to do that. I was always raised with the attitude by my father, who was a farmer, that you, as a steward, you leave things better than where, when you found them. So we would want to do something. I know there's concerns, like what happens if it doesn't work, and you have all this on the site, what do you do? We would take care of it. You wouldn't have to worry about there being a problem for the city.
Okay. I do kind of agree with what Councilmember Winkler said, that, you know, somewhere closer to the city might work a little better for the people living there. Although, you know, a bus, I can kind of see that, but it does seem like it could be nice, and so we'll maybe be keeping our eye. I mean, I thought the idea of Little Lake property, although, you know, we're just going through a brownfield study of that one right now, so that may take some time before it's even available.
Well, if there's something that appears to be better, of course, we would be interested.
Yeah, well, there might be other private properties, possibly. I mean, I don't want to talk about individual private properties here, you know, without their knowledge, but I've had private people say to me that they were interested in a small house village on their property, some properties that are sort of close. Maybe we can talk about that sometime, you could go talk to them and see if that makes any sense. Because I don't know what he was thinking. I don't know if he wanted to get paid a lot of money for that, or if he just wanted to see the vision. I wasn't really clear about that. So, yeah, and then I guess, you know, there's just been this little bit of a concern with what, like, when we did the ABC building, when you get a lot of federal funding involved in things, we sort of lose control of who actually moves in there. And it ends up getting dictated to us. And I think some people got frustrated with the ABC building that went in, because that was homeless, and, you know, new housing for homeless, I mean, there's a lot of really good things about that, but only a couple of people were actually taken off the street in Arcata.
Right.
And then we moved other people in. And so that, that becomes an issue for people. So I'm just wondering, you know, how you're thinking.
Well, one of the, one of the things that Andrew recommends is, because this is a community-driven initiative, is to rely on the community. If the community sees that it works, then they should sustain it. And so we would be really looking not just at government funding. In fact, we would probably be better off to have a lot more foundation kind of funding, and the kinds of things that would allow us the more, more freedom.
Okay, I don't think I have too many more questions. Haven't had a chance to read the operation manual, but thanks for giving it to us.
Yeah. It's adapted for whatever the project is.
So the difference with Village versus ABC is, Village is self-governed with a nonprofit U overseeing that to make sure that the self-governance actually works. ABC doesn't have anything like that. They're just, they're people a county sends in, and they're...
They have staff there, I understand, don't they have a site?
Yeah, they have staff.
So, let me just, let me just explain one thing, okay? Part of the reason why this is such a good idea is because we don't have a lot of the resources that are needed to take care of people. And people are really good at taking care of each other. They have to have the setting in which to do that, though. And all shelters of however configuration should have the intention of creating community and connecting people to a situation where they can establish their connections to community, so that they can become part of the larger community, or have that, which is one of the, which is one of the reasons why we have a countywide perspective. People should be able to be in the communities they want to be in. They don't, they're concentrated in areas now because there aren't things available for them in those communities. But with respect to support, we're talking about creating supportive communities where people really do support one another. And people who, just as an example, one of the things in the literature that this talks about, from the research that's been done studying these things, is that people who've been in homeless situations, the trauma of being homeless is something about, it's like being in the military and people recognizing that commonality. People who've been homeless recognize that same kind of shared experience with each other, and it's a, it's a point for bonding and creating what might be the core of community. So there, there's some really good things about all of this, and we don't have case managers, we don't have enough case managers for everyone to have a case manager. But in these environments, you can have case management and a very supportive community that has the intention of making sure that everybody, you know, has a plan and is getting the services they need and all of that.
So let me just ask staff something. Last time when we had that other presentation, I thought we came to the conclusion that if, say, we wanted to do this, and we wanted to use one of these properties, that we would have to go through the planning commission, would it? Because it's, is it sort of adapting zoning?
The, yeah, that's correct. The zoning for that site wouldn't accommodate what's currently being proposed. You know, if you'd like, I can do a little more detailed analysis and bring back, you know, other alternatives, but if the option was to try and adapt that, you know, per zoning, then it would have to go through a planning commission process. Ultimately, the council would approve the zoning change. That parcel, those parcels right now are also already zoned for SB2 zoning, are...
Emergency housing.
Emergency housing and homeless housing. And so I think that's why those parcels were selected by Jamie when he made his presentation, thinking there would be a connection there, but there's really no connection. That's for a stick-built structure, emergency shelter type of housing. So I can come back with some more alternatives.
And how about at Little Lakes? Is there any part of that that isn't being in the brownfield study at this point? It's sort of the closer part up, or, I just wanted to get more clarity.
There's currently nowhere zoned for this kind of housing in the city of Arcata. I mean, for all intents and purposes, I think, you know, if you were to, and I've done a detailed analysis on this particular project, but for all intents and purposes, it equates to camping, and there's nowhere in the city where you can camp and, you know, have a camp site. So it would, it would take some sort of, you know, modification of the municipal code or the land use code to accommodate this type of, you know, housing, ultimately.
Would it make any difference if the city declared a shelter crisis?
So we've, we've looked a little bit into a shelter crisis declaration and what that means. Eureka recently did it, and it's a mechanism under state law that allows for a duration, a fixed time period, the city to suspend the local building and zoning ordinances and codes and standards. You have to make findings of imminent need, but for the duration of that time period that's identified as the emergency, then the city can put to use any public facility for the housing. As I said, it's, it's durational, it's not permanent. And so the way Eureka used it was for, they were, they were actually citing facilities in the coastal zone, and the shelter crisis declaration does not suspend or preempt any of the state laws that apply. So they went through an emergency waiver process from a coastal development permit for just the duration of the emergency, and then they also had to...
What was the duration?
They declared one year, and they had to amend their, their local specific plan. They had to amend their zoning ordinances. They had to actually, during that time period, put in infrastructure. And that was, again, only for the true emergency housing. To put in something that's not emergency would require the full analysis that David is just referring to.
Just for a little background, when Andrew Heben went to do this in Eugene, of course, the building code, the zoning, didn't fly, just like it doesn't here. So he went, or the, the city changed, made amendments to their zoning, and basically permitted the sort of a camping situation. And so they just codified it, and, you know, it's not terribly complicated. I mean, considering the other stuff that we're looking at right now, this is pretty small change. I mean, there is a pathway.
Yes, there is, there absolutely is.
So I have a question around the Housing Strategic Plan that we've, you know, we've made a priority, you know, for this year, but recognizing we've had, obviously, some other projects that have come up, like with the rent stabilization ordinance. But David, can you talk about that Housing Strategic Plan, and perhaps how these types of proposals fit into that plan? Because I, you know, just thinking broadly about some of the other conversations that are happening in our community about even just market rate housing, of just being able to have that bird's eye view, of being strategic about where we put things, so that we really are maximizing the best use of each parcel. So I just, keeping that in mind, I just didn't know if you had anything to add about the Strategic Plan.
Yeah, the Strategic Plan really is still in, in concept, and the scope of the work for that hasn't been fleshed out completely. But the idea really is to identify some key sites for particular types of housing, identify the markets that are most in need, try and develop strategies to actually provide that housing, aligning some of our, our policy direction, you know, for specific areas that would, you know, would facilitate the development of those kinds of projects. And so certainly, you know, low-income housing is included in that, as you mentioned, as is market rate housing. One of the things that I think that, you know, has been, you know, that I'd like to include in outcomes from the specific plan, is a strategy for inclusionary zoning that actually works. The city had inclusionary zoning for a number of years, and eventually abandoned it, removing it from our regulations because it wasn't functional. And I think that in part, it wasn't functional because we didn't have the scale of development that, that made it affordable, that made it pencil out. The city was really, you know, financially backing the inclusionary zoning projects that did work, and now that we're in a, you know, post-redevelopment era, you know, post-CDBG to some extent era, and the home program, you know, our primary funding sources for these, these types of projects are now limited, we have to find new strategies. And so that's in part what the Housing Strategic Plan would do. Certainly, it, I hadn't really envisioned it getting to the level of detail of, you know, permitting this particular type of housing in specific areas, but we could, we could certainly include that. The idea was to develop, you know, some implementation measures that would identify the steps that would be necessary to do that. I don't know if you recall when we did our SB2 zoning, but it's, or, and/or when we developed the siting criteria for the Arcata Bay Crossing, it is a very challenging and lengthy process, and effectively, what happens is that nobody wants it in their backyard. And so the council will be, you know, faced with, you know, many complaints from folks who are in areas that, you know, include those sites that are being considered. And that was really the intent of SB2, was to eliminate that, the NIMBYism associated with siting these facilities.
Nizzie, can you come up here and talk there? Yeah, thanks.
You said that part of the, the housing plan was low-income housing. Do you have provisions for extremely low-income housing? Because one, and I say that seriously, because even the low-income housing as we know it, for the people that we work with and who are so challenged, they can't even deal with low-income housing, even though it's subsidized and only a third of the rent needs to be paid when it's fair market rent. Two-thirds of the population out there cannot access that. So making a provision for something that actually really is for extremely low income would help address the homeless needs in Arcata more than almost anything, so.
Were you going to say something?
Yeah, would you like me to address that, or?
Sure.
So, you know, I think that the Strategic Plan would be looking at that, and the inclusionary zoning requirements. Typically, there's a tipping point, depending on the number of units you provide for low, very low, extremely low-income housing. And I think that, you know, with, with the folks in, in, you know, this, this field that I've been talking to, I've been trying to, you know, brainstorm on the idea of providing for mixed income projects that would, you know, that would pencil, and some of the, some of the folks I'm talking to are really excited about the opportunity to be able to do that. For most developers, there's, there's kind of a time constraint, a money constraint, and the uncertainty constraint when they're dealing with trying to get a permit from the city. And limiting or eliminating any one of those is, you know, makes a project work for them. If they don't know, if they, you know, if they're, they're going to have to invest several hundred thousand dollars into design and permitting and that sort of thing, but they don't know what the outcome on the other side of that is, they're a lot less likely to want to agree, you know, early in that process to, you know, to providing for low-income housing. So one of the things the Strategic Plan is intended to do is to identify specifically the project types and have them pre-permitted, if you will. And then along with that, the city would be identifying, you know, amenities that it would like to see in those projects, if you want to get that pre-permitting. So you may have a site, and you can come in and, you know, go through the permit process to get whatever you want, or if you want to provide what we've already established in our Strategic Plan, then you could get that without a permit. So that eliminates the uncertainty. They'd be willing to pay for that. And so in those, you could include mixed income housing, that would include very low or extremely low-income housing, depending on, you know, what the city specifies. That still wouldn't get you the numbers, wouldn't get you 30 in an apartment complex, for example. And this is a strategy for having very cost-effective, you know, housing provision. So it's, they're really two totally different kinds of solutions.
So could we, without making any kind of firm commitment, have Community Development and AHA work together on finding a parcel in Arcata that would work, and plan for how we write the ordinance, the zoning change in the ordinance, so that it would be allowed to be built? Because they're, they've done what they can, now it's kind of up to us to say, okay, if we're ever going to do this, it has to be done with Community Development helping write the ordinance change to the land use guide, or whatever we need to change, so that that kind of project can be built. And then identifying what piece of city property, because it's, expecting some private person to do it is just not going to happen. Identifying the city property and saying, okay... Identifying the city property and saying, okay, this will or won't work, and finding the best site, and, you know, just doing that footwork, and then we can, it can come back to us, and we can look at it and say, is this, is this really possible or not? So, I, I'd like to, I guess, make a motion that we direct Community Development to work with AHA, or, I don't know if there's anybody else that's interested, but at this point, it's AHA, to, to start the groundwork to make this happen, because it's, I mean, it could take, I don't know, many months, just to get all the details back, so that we could say, yeah, that's a good idea, and AHA could have more details on their funding and, you know. So, I was kind of rambling, yeah.
Well, I do want to just agree with you that, you know, we've been talking about this and talking about this, and there's, there's some interest in seeing something move forward.
Right.
To actually see something.
Right.
See how it works. Check it out. There is an element of, or, you know, I feel like, I don't know if I'm broken down enough, and I'm like, okay, okay. But there's also just a sense of, yeah, you know, we want, we'd like to see it happen, in a sense. You know, we'd like to check it out, see if it can work. And I want to just thank you for the work you've put into this. I can see that you've put thought, and, and, you know, it's not just a fly-by-night idea. You've been really thinking about this for a while, and so, I just want to thank you for that. I think that was-
Hey. Just a couple of things, and, you know, I'm not opposed to gathering more information. Some of the areas that I'm kind of more interested in getting some more information on is, given that we don't have any of the, you know, service partners here, I'd be really interested to kind of hear more about what they envision, and if they have, you know, any particular thoughts to share about this proposal. I am interested to kind of hear more about, I think, for me, it would just be really great to know, if we're even saying, we're expressing interest in this, if you can kind of go back to these potential granters, to people who've said they want to donate money. And I just, I just really want to be able to say, be able to see, okay, $100,000, here's a breakdown of, you know, the potential granters for it, here's how likely those granters are, when does that funding come in, and here's how many pledges we have from individuals and businesses. For me, you know, it's, if we're going to move forward with this, then I need to be able to see that level of detail. And I think that's reasonable, given that this would be providing, you know, government property to do this, taxpayer-funded property. So, I think it's just only fair to have that level of detail back. And then, I'm also just curious, I think it's great, you've already started having these conversations with adjacent neighbors, and the research I've done, I went to that presentation in 2014, and I've gone to different conferences that have talked about these types of villages, is, you know, how important the community engagement is, and working with the neighbors, and getting that buy-in. And I guess, I'm, I'm just feeling a little hesitant to, to have this, like, official endorsement on behalf of the city, recognizing that there's still that community-building work that needs to happen there. And I, and I guess what I would hate to see happen is that then it seems like the city's already made a decision, and this is moving forward, and I want you to be able to have that, those conversations, and get those, what are those concerns that are coming up, you know? I'm not saying that that's a make or break it, but given that there's a couple other things I'd want some more information on, I think that's just another component of it. So, it's not just that one thing on its own, but kind of those other pieces that I just want some more information on. Not saying that, trying to prevent any conversations with staff, but I think, and, those are the things that are kind of holding me up before saying, like, yeah, let's really, like, move forward on creating a plan.
Yeah, I, I hear you, because I think also, you know, the city giving, whatever approval thing, people then think the city's doing it.
Yeah.
We're done, you know? And, and that's, that's, that could, it could happen that way. So, we, you don't want to give the impression that we've made this absolute decision when you're still approaching neighbors and trying to talk in a creative way? So, I suppose maybe let's, but we do want to see it move forward.
Yeah.
So, what do we want to do? We want to maybe-
I have something I want to say to you. The other one is that you have a lot of obligations now, and, and so, I think, to the city manager and community development director, how, what level of commitment could you potentially make to the amount of time or budget and to, to this process? And how does that fit in with existing commitments and priorities?
I think we-
And when should that be decided? Should it be decided now, or should be decided at the time of goal-setting, is the other question, too?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we just really need to have an understanding of the council's priorities in terms of the projects. But I'd be happy to work with the community development director, just to outline what's sort of left on the plate that was funded this year, what that timeline looks like, where this potentially could fit in, and if it was moved up in priority, what would get pushed? And if it was, you know, placed in priority at a level that didn't push projects, and we could bring that back for you to review.
Mic on. I personally would find that helpful. I know that's one of the things we've been talking a lot about, is, you know, we've had so many different things that have kind of come up, not, you know, as planned. And for me, I really just want to make sure that we're, nothing's kind of fallen off, off the plate in that area, too. So, this may still be something that we, you know, are able to fit in for, for this fiscal year, but, but I, just you bringing that up reminds me that, like, yes, like, I want to make sure that we know what has to be stepped back in order for this to move forward, and that we may decide that that's the right decision. But I think having that fuller picture would just be helpful. And then also, because I feel like there's this other, these other pieces that I would, at least personally, I think would be useful information to have, that's something on the staff level that can be happening in the meantime, too.
Can I just say one thing? I'm, I'm getting a mixed message. I'm not real clear. And what I'm getting a mixed message about is, you would like us to do some community building, and, you know, work with the neighbors and stuff, but if we aren't going to have a site to do that, it puts us kind of in a position where we really don't know what to do. And we've just, we left that conversation with recognizing that there may be a different site that might work better than this one, and so, that leaves us in a position where we have nothing to do. And I don't ever want to be in a position where I have nothing to do about that.
No, that's good enough.
So, if you could help clarify, that would be good.
And if I could just offer that, you know, I sit with Nezzy and Brett, actually, too, on the housing, you know, community housing group, that's looking at affordable housing and equity issues as well. And so, you know, I can tell you that we've, we've also been working informally, you know, talking and touching bases, and, you know, considering this project. So, I think that, you know, I recognize the concern, if you don't know exactly where the site is, you don't want to do a bunch of legwork outreach, if that's not going to be the site. So, you know, I think, you know, there's, you know, if AHA is willing to do the majority of the outreach and legwork and the early, you know, planning, we can at least, without bumping on the other priorities that we have, continue the conversation and keep it moving forward, and identifying what the next steps are, you know, either through the housing group or, or, you know, separate meetings.
So, do you feel that you could, like, work with AHA to kind of look at other potential properties? Or does that seem like something? Or is that the too much work that we were just talking about earlier?
You know, I think that we could probably easily, easily generate a list of city-owned properties. That's, that's pretty easy. So, so, yeah, we can at least do that legwork, and then, you know, you know, without diverting too much of the department's work, at this point, there'd still be something for AHA to do, to, you know, to continue to do either outreach and/or, you know, evaluating based on their criteria, and the things that they're thinking about, whether or not the, the site is suitable, and we can continue the conversation, I think.
And I guess we can't really bring it to the Planning Commission until there's a site.
That's right.
Yeah, the, the one thing that could happen in planning is visualizing what that ordinance would look like to allow this kind of project. It's not site-specific, you know what I'm saying? So, up in Eugene, they've got this ordinance that says, here, this is, if you want to do this project, here's what you have to do to meet the city codes to do it. And it applies to the whole city, so. I mean, that, that's something, that, the ordinance would be separate of the site.
That is true. That is definitely getting into a work plan, and I'd want to confer with, with Karen on that.
Yeah. I mean, that's just another, another path that has to be gone down.
Absolutely.
One thing I will just say, like, you know, so this is kind of, the proposal has been kind of around this site, you know, perhaps there's some other city properties that are better suited for it. But I still think, in terms of some of my points around, information around, you know, service partners and getting that feedback, and, and still, I think, even with the fundraising. I think even if you're able to show, I mean, right, there's public record of us saying, yeah, let's talk about this more. So, I think the fundraising piece, and getting those pledges, and kind of getting that funding breakdown, I think those are still things that can happen in the meantime.
How about the wetness of that site? I mean, is it really wet? It's really wet. So, it's really not a place that camping could occur.
No.
Okay. So, that's the thought.
There are definitely some drainage issues out there that we'd have to correct. The site hasn't been maintained, and, and Nezzy's correct, the, the road pathway, when Imron built his second phase, he was required to rough in the, the road. That's a common road. Ultimately, there's an easement where that road is, and so, there's a, a common road. So, that road was roughed in, and it does probably impound water on the site.
Sophia, I want to just address the funding issues. Once again, we have applied for grants with very positive response, except that we don't have a site. And so, to go to them and say, again, we could go to them again, and say, if we had a site, would you, and can you write that down? But that's probably not the way it would work. So, having a site really, I mean, I can generate a list of those-
Yes. I guess that's what I'm asking for, is to say, here's the types of grants we've, we've applied for.
I can do that. I can do that.
And how many, you know, is that making up $50,000? Is that $80,000? And then, what's the breakdown of pledges for that other portion of it? That's really what I want to see. I understand, I mean, I, I work for a nonprofit, so I totally get it.
All right. Those things I can do.
Yeah.
And the detailed budget, I've got detailed budget-
Okay.
-where we've costed things and all of that for you. So, we can do it.
Maybe this is what you were asking for, what got me thinking about this, the list of partners? You know, like, sort of a list of partners, and what their role would be, like, given sort of laid out.
Oh, yes. We can, we can certainly do that. And all of those that we listed on the slide, there are many more. But we do have letters of support from all of them, so we can, we can do all those things very quickly.
Well, and also, in the letters of support, it isn't just for them to say that they support, but for them to say what, what-
It's what they will do.
... what commitment or resources that they're willing to devote to the project.
Yes. And that is what they have done, so.
So, I suppose to sum up where we're at, we are going to generate a list of city properties, and that maybe can be given to all of us, and we can all look at them and think about it. The Little Lakes is in coastal zone, right? So, that would have to go through coastal zone stuff, too. So, that's-
Yes.
-an issue there.
It's, it's also a stone's throw from ABC.
Yeah. Okay, that's true. And so, and then you'll be working on some of these, laying out a little bit more information, and-
So, I guess we kind of, kind of look at bringing it back with this new knowledge that we might have in a few month or two, or-
Yeah, I suppose that would, that would make some sense. We could kind of fill in some stuff.
So that we, you know, so it doesn't just sit, doesn't just sit out there, and, you know?
Another couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the process with our daily information?
Well, you could always send stuff to the city manager, and then she'll distribute it to all of us. And I, I think this makes some sense, that maybe, maybe sort of towards the goal-setting times, and then we put it onto the agenda, and we could talk about it again. And by then, we maybe will have been thinking more so about a lot of different properties around, and could talk to even some private landowners, see if they are really interested.
We still have public comment on this item.
So, it's time for public comment?
Whenever you want. We just don't want to forget it.
Yeah. Okay. It's time for public comment. So, this is a time for the public to comment on this particular agenda item.
I agree. I think this is an excellent opportunity for the city. But 30 people, you know, that's very small. In our city here, we've got hundreds homeless. The area where it's going to be set up can be up for question, but people are going to need to get to the services in town. They're going to have to get to the doctor, they're going to have to get to the shopping, things like this. A bus isn't always the easiest way. I have a bicycle on a bike trailer. All my stuff I own is on that. I have to take it with me everywhere. Storage is also got to be a consideration. Sister organizations are, should be vetted, because I have questions on some of the organizations they're associated, AHA's associated with right now. And I'd be glad to write up my ideas and send them to the management, the Arcata management. But, you know, 30 people, I think it's excellent. I'd been working on this issue since 1985, and every year, it's put off, it's put off. More, more things are looked into. What we've got now is an immediate emergency. We need the council, we need the supervisors. To declare an emergency, there is a military surplus. We need tents. The UN does it for the people that are, you know, leaving their country. Why the hell can't we have here? Why can't we have safe places now with UN tents? They've got mobile bathrooms, mobile showers, mobile kitchens, the fire down south, the hurricanes. This is, I mean, it makes good news, but what about the people in the community? The hundreds, not 30, I'll take you down any place in this town, there's hundreds right here in the city. Every community should get together and make a place safe for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need several of them. It's real. We do. Hundreds of people here in Arcata.
Anyone else want to address the counsel on this item?
Hi. My name, my name is Roy Dahlberg, and I also work with AHA. And I'm just going to take a couple of minutes, or maybe that's all I have, I guess. Oh, the clock's not running, I appreciate that.
There we go.
Oh, come on.
You almost got away with it.
I want to tell you about a meeting I was late for early this week. I went out of my house, and I got in my car, and I couldn't see anything. So, I started my car, and I let it get warm, but I went out to do what I do most days, which is wash off the windshield. But my hose was frozen. I couldn't do it. So, I had to sit in my car for about five minutes for it to get warm and melt the ice. What I want to tell you is that, while we talk about all the problems that are here, the gentleman who just spoke talks about not enough, and I understand there's economic development issues, but we shouldn't forget that while we're doing this in December, January, February, I don't know if it's going to be runaway youth, an old person like me with disabilities, somebody who was damaged in Iraq, people are going to die on your streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
David, I guess we don't need, you've already gotten some instructions, some guidance, I think, huh? But let me just say, you asked for a list of parcels. Well, it's something that we at AHA have looked at. I'm just, I'm a friend of AHA, and I go to their general assembly meetings. Your man, Brian? Not yours, but Environmental Services, huh? The GIS man? First class. Man, I asked him for a list of all city-owned properties, I had it within a couple of days. So, if you want it, I can send it to you. So, we don't have to wait two months to look at this stuff. I hope we can move faster than that. And I'm really pleased that I'm hearing that you're looking at, you know, trying to not abandon this thing again. Let's keep the ball rolling. I think we had a good, great presentation tonight. You, or, this is great to hear that you've had this dialogue with Nezzy, so you're pretty well-familiar with it, and I just hope we can keep moving a little bit faster. Maybe we can meet again in another month, you think? Sometime in January?
Maybe. We have, we have a few things on the agenda, or kind of agendized out.
The first gap in the agenda, let's get it in there again, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Winchell Dillon Beck, and I am also an AHHA board member. First and foremost, I wanted to thank our presenters, Nezzi, Michael, and Edie tonight. A lot of people didn't think that AHHA had the expertise and board members that have years of experience. There's a crisis going on, and as somebody once told you, it's, you can see it. I've been canvassing around in McKinleyville, Arcata, talking to people. There's a crisis, it's more visible than ever. If you looked out today, HUD released their report in the Pacific Northwest, a 14% increase in homelessness. And the part of the population that's unsheltered went up 23%. There's a crisis going on. And I think one thing they put on that thing here, and I hear a lot of talking, but it's your job, it's the political will, and it doesn't matter whether this is homelessness or healthcare or the important issues, we need to do it. It's not going to get any better, you know? Income equality is growing. It's getting worse and worse, and we have to find solutions, you know? I came along on this board, and I know these guys have been working a lot longer on this issue, but we have to start addressing it. You know, I don't know what to say, you know? I heard people come to this meeting tonight and say, "They're afraid." I hear it in McKinleyville. We need to start addressing these issues now, or they're going to get worse. So I urge you to not wait too long, to work with our people, to get the process going, because one village isn't going to solve the whole problem. Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the council?
And that's all. Just to give you some confidence, we're dedicated to working with you, and we are also, and your staff, to make adjustments when are needed, in what's needed, and to satisfy the building and zoning codes, or whatever it is that has to happen, and the requirements of the departments and whatever entities, whoever oversees safe construction and operations and all that. I can't go for very many more meetings, honestly, without getting to the point where I am going to be just in tears before you, because we've been doing this for so long, and I see people, I meet with them every day, my phone gets blown up every day by people that are out there. And we are the only thing they have. And so I just want to encourage you to remember that these are our neighbors. Over 90% of the people that are out there are from our 955 zip codes. There are kids, there are parents, there are grandparents, there are people who really need a beloved community, and we're the ones that are going to create it, because that's all there is. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to address the council on this agenda item? Okay, I'll close. Okay, come on up.
If you really want something to happen, you can figure out how to make it happen. And I think that's an attitude that I'm not quite hearing from the city yet, but I think that's the commitment that's needed, and it'll work, it'll happen. So I'm just supporting that.
Okay, thank you.
Very quickly, this proposed village is going to save the city money. It's going to save police work, it's going to save health work, what the health providers are seeing, it's going to save emergency room response. It is going to save the community money.
Okay, thanks. Is that all? Anyone else? Okay, I'll close public comment.
It's closed now. I don't wait till the end.
Okay, so we have a bit of a plan. Rudy's going to get us the list.
And we're going to check it twice.
Yeah, there we go. And we could maybe get that Eugene ordinance to use this kind of, you know, to look at that as a basis, and we'll just, maybe we'll just see, as soon as we can get this back in onto the agenda, and we'll let you know. And you guys will work on laying out what your partners, who your partners are, and what their commitment is to doing on this project, and then, you know, some of the potential funding resources. And, I mean, I kind of know how you feel about that, because I'm a grant writer, too, so I realize it's hard to kind of ask for funds, but anyway. Okay, so I think that's as far as we can take that right now, but thank you, thank you for your presentation, and I think we, I think what this is, is us moving forward in some type of positive way. And I realize that doesn't sound as determined as you probably want to hear it, but I think at this point, that's as much commitment as we can give to that, so.
Thank you for your talk.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and thank you.
And I just wanted to say really quick, I just want to say that my questions are really about, to make something like this successful, so I hope, I hope that can come across, that, you know, the issues around fundraising and the, having the community support, I mean, right now, this is a very friendly crowd, you know, but moving forward like this is going to meet a lot of resistance, and a lot of these questions are going to come up, so I want to make sure that these questions are just getting answered as soon as possible. So anyways, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, there is an opportunity for closing comments in, coming up, but we have more on our agenda. So now we are at new business B, introduce two ordinances, amending the City of Arcata municipal code, ordinance number 1496, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending zoning regulations pertaining to cannabis regulation, and ordinance number 1497, an ordinance, City Council, City of Arcata, amending the Arcata municipal code pertaining to the use and regulation of cannabis. Do we have staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Before I start with the staff report, I just want to acknowledge, you know, Nancy and Joe, who scrambled nonstop to get this agenda item before you tonight. As you recall, we came in in November and informed you that the Planning Commission in a couple of days was going to look at a draft ordinance to recommend changes to the land use code that would change the marijuana innovation zone, medical marijuana innovation zone, to a cannabis innovation zone, and also allow for some limited retail. And we asked for your direction, even though we had already noticed that hearing, we asked for your direction and blessing on that, and you gave it. Planning Commission on the 28th did adopt PC Resolution 1707, which was included in your packet tonight, making the recommendation for those changes. So we're here before you tonight to introduce ordinances 1496 and 1497, which, as you recall from the last staff report, are the other two legs of the regulatory program, which involved the cannabis activity permit, the municipal code, and the land use code. And so the ordinances tonight, the ordinance 1496 will amend the land use code based on the changes that we had discussed, that I just mentioned in brief here. And then the municipal code, 1497 ordinance, really collapses Chapters 10 and 10.1, which were our medical cannabis and non-medical cannabis regulatory program into one streamlined chapter, and then also amends the CCAP process in the municipal code to allow for non-medical cannabis to be issued licenses. Since it's late, I won't go into much detail, but I do want to mention two things. Joe, after the packet had been produced, noted some minor administrative changes where medical was maybe left behind that we'll clean up for you, so you may have noticed those in the proposed amendments. Also, that the, one of the changes that we made included in your ordinance, I believe on packet page 99, I'm sorry, not on packet page 99, on packet page 102, we had gone through and changed the definitions in the land use code so that the cooperatives or collectives were changed to medicinal cannabis instead of marijuana. We subsequently, to the preparation, to the publication of the packet, realized that we don't use that anywhere in the code, so we're going to ask that you strike that from the ordinance. And then in addition...
The identification card, or what was that?
Yeah, can you clarify what?
What we're striking?
I'm sorry, medicinal cannabis, the entire definition.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so medicinal cannabis is not used anywhere else in the code, and so we're just going to strike that from this ordinance if you'd make that amendment. And then finally, sort of the next piece of the change is that the Planning Commission reviewed, again, we had produced the staff report before we had the discussion with the council, staff report reviewed a draft ordinance that did not include urgency measures to implement it. Your ordinance does, in Section 13, which starts on page 103, for the land use code amendment, the 1496, at the end there, the effective date, Section 13, has findings that we're proposing that you make to make the ordinance effective immediately, so those land use code provisions would go into effect immediately.
Two readings, though.
After two readings, thank you for that clarification. Immediately upon adoption, so this is the introduction, immediately upon adoption it would be effective. 1497 has similar provisions for the amendments to the municipal code to make those effective upon adoption. And that would in effect allow the folks that are in this market, that are intending to become active in the market in early January, actually become active as soon as it's possible to become active, you know, come January 1. And those findings are really predicated on some concerns about the potential for illicit activities, illicit sales, that were received at the public testimony at your last hearing. So I can go into detail, a city manager can go into detail on this, or the city attorney in terms of the findings that would need to be made, if you have any questions.
Anyone have questions?
I have a couple of details that I want to talk about. I don't know if it's too early for that, well, okay. If you look at page, packet page 108, if you look under G2, it's cultivation area shall not exceed 100 square feet. Cultivation for personal recreational is six plants, and lately, I've looked at a lot of plants, and 100 square feet may not fit six of the larger style plants that people are starting to grow. And so I wondered if we could, like, take away the 100 square feet and just let it be six plants, especially...
Just to orient you, this was pre-existing in the current municipal code, Section 10.2. And I believe it was the prior Community Development Director that used that standard from zoning ordinance, the zoning regulations, is that possible? Yeah. So that's where it came from.
And it kind of came through the county a little bit, or the discussion?
It just kind of came along with the, you're saying it just kind of came along with the ordinance and the, with what we had for medical?
Exactly. Because I was on, I was on the Planning Commission when that happened, and we had a big problem with people doing large-scale growing for illegal commercial purposes, so we were trying to limit it to true personal use. And so we hashed out that specific number a lot at that time.
Right, but now, here, you know, I was here when we set the medical, I was on the council when we set the medical, so, you know, I got a lot of background. I know that when we did the medical, when we set the rules, there weren't the big Christmas tree plants that people are starting to grow now.
Well, it's just that it's six plants, basically, that's what you're trying to say.
Well, if we just say six plants and don't have the 100 square feet...
That makes sense to me, because they could be in conflict.
But we were trying to prevent people from taking over, like, whole, large sections of apartments for that purpose.
Right, well, I'm talking about outdoor.
So if I could just interject real quick, the land use code originally, you're right, in the medical regulation that we adopted for personal use, had a limitation of 50 square feet for residents, and then you could get 100 square feet if there were two people in that residence. Sort of recognizing that that was enough area for a person to cultivate for their own purposes. When the state law came out, we amended it to try and simplify, we made it so that it was 100 square feet, shall not exceed 100 square feet, and then we added the six plants. When the adult use regulations came out, I think we adopted into Section 10.1 parity, so that the parity in 10.1, so that we didn't have to walk into a residence and say, "Okay, you've got six plants, but they're in 125 square feet, which regulation are we operating under?" So we just made them have the same parity as with the land use code.
What do you mean by parity?
The exact same regulation, so that we didn't have to determine whether it was medical or non-medical that you were using for personal use.
Okay, right. But they, but they still conflict a little, potentially, anyway.
They're in parity. If you look on packet page 100, under D...
There's not an imperative of 100 square feet.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
The two, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, the 100 foot, the 100 square foot limit is a cap, so if you're growing super Christmas trees, you still have to put them into 100 square feet, and that's the, that is the intent of this language here. It's a limit on how much space can be devoted for personal use. That's the intent. And so all I'm suggesting, and I'm sorry, David can then complete it, is that there was a lot of discussion, as Michael pointed out, in coming to these sort of size limitations in addition to plant limitations, and if you want to eliminate it, you might want to think about it a little more, or, you know, consider what the implications may be. That's all I'm suggesting. Because the state doesn't regulate size, state is only regulating that number.
So if, I don't know, it was something that the Planning Commission spent a lot of time on it before it sent it to the City Council?
Right, and with the medical, we didn't permit outdoor growing of medical. As I recall, it was all indoor. And so this is a little bit different, in the sense that the recreational will be permitted outdoor, personal.
So we're not limiting people very much, to limit them to 100 square feet for personal use?
I don't need to beat it to death, I just...
Right, I hear what you're saying, because I think they are in conflict, because I think now the state's passed six plants, and that is kind of the rule of the day. So now we say six plants and 100 square feet, which just makes it more complicated.
Except, though, that there are certain carve-outs under the state regulation for, you know, some amount of local control, so it is, I think, up to you, and if you think it's inconsistent, or you would rather not have that extra standard, that's...
Yeah, I don't have to, like I say, I'm not going to need that much space.
Well, neither am I, no.
Yeah, well, I don't know what to say. I mean, I think they are in conflict, but I think what we're talking about is individual people's houses, so when is this actually going to ever be an issue?
Right, right. I don't, I don't see building inspector with a tape measure saying, "Well, you've got 10 by 10 or 12 by 10," I mean, you know?
Well, we're discouraging people from doing a larger amount, and it's, I mean, it's, it's, would be extremely difficult to enforce, but it's a sense of the city of what we, what people do.
Sure, right. Okay, so any, I'm done with what I was concerned about.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I don't feel too much concerned about this. We had kind of a big conversation, so does anyone want to make a motion, or maybe we can ask for a public comment at this point? Does anyone want to make a public comment on this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, someone should go, I'm strong.
Do we have to find the findings now, do we need to say that, or do we just have to support?
No, if you just read by title, as you normally do, and waive reading of the text. And you do need to make the one change, though, that David has requested.
Getting rid of that 13.
It's a definition that's not used anywhere, yeah.
Okay, so I move to introduce-
Microphone.
Microphone.
Okay. I move to introduce ordinance number 1496, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, Arata, let's see, amend-
Did you say Arcata?
Amending zoning regulations pertaining to cannabis, or some people prefer marijuana regulation. Waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
Okay, wait a minute, we're changing the name from marijuana to cannabis, so I think you have to adjust yourself there. I know it's hard for you, but that's one of the points we're doing.
No, I said the word cannabis.
Okay.
And then you kind of freestyled it. Wait, so do you want to do, can we do a big motion?
And can I combine that with the other one?
Yes. Keep going.
And introduce ordinance number 1497, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the Arcata municipal code pertaining to the use and regulation of cannabis, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
And then, as amended?
As amended.
And then continue the public hearing, do we need to say that? I don't know if we do. We'll continue the public hearing, December 20th.
Do I do that too? No, okay.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, pose, okay, motion carries. And we will continue this public hearing until December 20th, and that's when it will be adopted. Okay, now we are at C, appoint, yeah, appoint council members to select the 2018 City of Arcata Business of the Year recipient.
Good evening, my name is Joe Matier, senior planner with the city, and staffer later is on with the City of Arcata Economic Development Committee, and this is the time of year for giving, and we're here tonight to select two council members for ceremonial purposes for the 2018 City of Arcata Business of the Year award. And this year, the Economic Development Committee has selected several businesses that we are forwarding to the recommending or ceremonial body that you choose, that they do reflect to business practices that protect the environment and provide community value through charity work, employee support. Last year, the award was given to the Dirty Business Soil Analytics, and it was a woman-owned business, and it was awarded by a council member, Patino, and council member, Ornalis, at the Arcata Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner. This year, the dinner will be on February 24, 2018, Saturday. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to be honest.
You'd like to, either of you?
Yeah, sure.
Because we did it last year, okay, so maybe Brett and Michael, so we can-
I'll make a motion to appoint council members, Michael Winkler and Brett Watson, to this special committee designating Arcata Business of the Year.
Second.
So we've motioned in a second, is there anyone in the public wishing to make a comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, we are almost through the agenda, receive status report on capital improvement program fiscal year 2017-18. Sorry to have to keep you here this late. I would dash more along.
Getting the last one?
Well, you could save a little in case you want, but I guess you guys each have some, okay, thank you. You doing okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good evening, my name is Katie Marsalon, I'm the property and special projects manager, and one of the items that I get to work on is our capital improvement program. I think we're ready here. Okay, so, it's good to see everyone, this is, I hope this is a light item, we get to look at a number of accomplishments and a number of projects that are underway this evening, and I have the, I get the opportunity to make the presentation, but this is a combined effort, it represents a lot of work from a number of staff members throughout all of our departments at the city, so I really can't take immediate credit. The project represents different, or excuse me, the projects represented in the presentation tonight are all part of your adopted budget for fiscal year 17-18, and the intent, bringing this forward now in December, is that we are approaching the end of the calendar year, and believe it or not, we're looking ahead to our next new year, which will be taking on goal setting with the council and with staff getting ready for budget planning and looking ahead to fiscal year 18-19. So this is a nice time to be able to give you some status updates, look at things that were currently underway or recently completed, and then a number that are multi-year that will continue into 18-19. And there is quite a list, so I don't know that we will dive through too many details. I think the presentation you had tonight, for example, on Old Arcata Road, that's a great opportunity to really get into very detailed pieces of the projects, so many of these have been before you at other times, but I definitely want to be available and answer questions. And we have our staff members here with us, our assistant city engineer, our deputy director of utilities and streets, and also our deputy director of community services, recreation parts, and natural resources. So let's get going, okay. So the intent of our capital improvement program, really the function is to systematically plan, schedule, and fund our large infrastructure projects. And the outcomes of that process, we have this cohesive planning document, so part of your agenda item, the attachment, is the CIP, the adopted CIP for your fiscal year 17-18, and that's what we're going to refer to throughout this presentation. But this also provides a method for us not only to create something that's consistent and do our findings to reference our general plan and all of our other adopted policy documents, but to give us a way to communicate these larger multi-year projects. Some of the benefits for me personally, there's a great focus process for us between staff and council, it helps guide dialogue with community members and engagement, and I would say almost every one of these, there is crossover between multiple divisions and multiple departments, so it creates that focus or ability to really cross over between multiple departments. The software we use and the methods for planning, each of these sheets describes a project to you, it is related specifically to your budget and the activity sections of the budget, and then we identify the account, the funding status, a number of these are partially funded or fully funded, the department, the contact person, a description of the project, and we've tried to give enough information, but also keep it simple and kind of high level, so it doesn't become too overwhelming. And then obviously the estimated costs, work plan, and then the funding sources, number of these have grants that were, you know, coming in, a different components that we're funding over multiple years or awaiting future funding. So these are sequenced in the same way you're seeing them in your document, we had a combined, kind of our beginning list, community development, planning, and also equipment purchases, we're looking at purchasing our building permit software for building and planning, and then we've also just recently purchased and implemented the police worn body cameras and vehicle cameras with an update there, so there's some really exciting work happening there. These activities are street construction and maintenance activities, have gotten a lot of great progress this year, we've been able to do the annual pavement maintenance, which included Buttermilk and South Age Street, so you've been able to see those improvements coming along, and some of the planned projects include annual slurry of Janes Road, the ongoing Arcata Road project, Old Arcata Road, and we have completed the Samo crossing for the Bay Trail, we've completed some great projects. In our alternative transportation, this is where we routinely budget for accessible ramps, sidewalks, and traffic calming, so those aren't necessarily specific to one particular area, but we always try to set aside and your engineering folks budget each year to address, you know, a long list that's tied up with their kind of goals and their pavement management and sidewalk improvement plan. And then our Humboldt Bay Trail North, which is our big hurrah project that we've completed. And the other piece that was on here that I know has been of interest, the pedestrian bridge lighting improvements, those are being worked on in planning stages, and we'll have the safe routes to schools advancing as well. Any current, should I keep going?
Yeah.
Oh, just, what's, what's happening with Annie and Mary Trail?
I would love to pass that question on.
We're hoping to hear in the very near future that we were successful in a grant application to work with one of our family organizations towards creating the alternatives analysis and creating the ultimate decision for your council to take on as far as where that alignment will go between the, basically the north terminus of the existing Rails with Trails project up to the city limits. And Julie Nature worked very hard on this, and we do have a partner, and we think we'll have some good news to offer you in the very near future.
Okay, I'll proceed. So our drainage and stormwater projects, the Jolly Giant Spillway project was completed, and that has something that has been worked on for a number of years, so that's great progress. We've had ongoing work with a number of the different stormwater and creeks and drainage, and I believe you're going to see more, even more activity in the coming year. Our corporation yard, we always identify ongoing either exterior building or interior building, this past year, we completed the re-roofing of the control building, which you can see, it's quite an aged roof, so it was converted to a metal roof, and that's going to be a longstanding investment, which is fantastic. Our water treatment and distribution, this, we have our water line improvements, so a lot of these, you know, we forecast for, but it's identifying the specific location, prioritizing those specific locations, so both Bret Hart Alley and Westwood have been identified for phased water line improvements. We're continuing water storage for Zone 1, and also the Sunny Bray Water System continuation. Well, I guess we should highlight, though, that's our beautiful new tank, our new Tank And for wastewater collection, the staff have been working diligently on the inflow and infiltration, we refer to this as the INI project, we do have funding applications submitted for revolving loan funds to help complete that project and get us through kind of further design and bidding. And then we have some of our other sewer lift stations, we were able to complete the Bayside 2 Lift Station upgrade this year, and then we have ongoing work for manhole and sewer line repair. So this is a photo of our vegetation management, and some highlights here, just, again, the Bayside 2 Lift Station, the funding application submitted for INI, and also for our treatment plant upgrades, and we do have, we've conducted the procurement process for a pending contract award that would get us into the design and engineering for the treatment plants, we're really trying to stay on track and keep moving forward with those steps, and we're also having ongoing correspondence with our permit, our compliance and discharge permit.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
Okay. I, you know, I just want to tell you how excited. Bayside 2 Lift Station completed, and I'm just got a solo out mic on this one, it's an amazing thing, that's something we've been working on for, well, it's been in our minds for a long, long time, and it's going to enable people to sleep much better at night, that we know the post office is not going to go down. Okay, that's, that's probably four years we've been, we picked that thing up and something would come up or whatever, so I just want to let you know, that was a very important project that got carried off very well, and by the staff did an absolutely fabulous job on that, so I just want to have to highlight that, it's a big one.
So many of these, when you put them in a list, it seems like, you know, maybe not as significant, but a number of these, there's been failure, there's been equipment that has aged and has been struggling and requiring a lot of staff time and a lot of, you know, Band-Aids and keeping it going, and now we're able to do these improvements, which is fantastic. And then we have our wastewater treatment projects, so the biggest obviously is the reconfiguration at the treatment plant, and then we have other components that will continue to advance that are related but can be moved forward independently, and we have some fun ones on here as well, we have received grant funding for the I Street Boat Ramp and its dock and a toilet at that facility, so those are, you know, something to look forward to. Our energy management projects, this is, it's a smaller amount of money that is spent on these projects, but there's been a great amount of work here, so we've been able to fully convert the Marsh Interpretive Center with solar panels and now operating heat pumps, so we're running at a zero net energy at that facility, compliments to Julie and Dennis and their crew there operating the building. We've been able to do micro PV solar at a number of our utility sites, so a lot of the pump buildings now have their own offsets, lighting at the library, city hall, and at D Street Community Center, and also installing our EV chargers at city facilities, and we have other locations that we're looking at for those, getting those online.
Are you guys talking about putting solar panels on Foodworks?
I'm not sure.
Does that get discussed? I mean, I've heard it discussed over the course of a few years in different times, and I just wondered.
It has, we did an analysis back when the Energy EECBG grants, they were called, came up, and I think Councilmember Winkler actually did an analysis for us once, and yeah, on Foodworks as well, so we do look at that, that roof badly needs to be replaced, but the amount of venting and the type of structure that that roof is, is extremely expensive, so it is a project that we're starting to work on through the CIP, it would take multiple years to fund, we haven't done solar on that until we address the condition of the roof itself, but it definitely comes up, and if we do a replacement, really trying to consolidate the venting of that to maximize solar potential.
Okay.
All right.
I did do the, analysis included the corp yard.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So our parks projects, I have had a blast seeing Greenview Park come alive, and just how colorful, and it's a pretty fantastic little park. We have the ongoing design for the ballpark upgrades, our Carlson Mad River Park, which we were able to do acquisition this year, and then a number of park projects that Arcata should be so proud, you have amazing parks here, great park planning staff, really awesome crew. We have the Dog Park, which was allocated funding for, and we're still trying to identify, you know, what is the best use of that, what's the best location, having those ongoing, that dialogue, and then our Footsall, from a private donor, that's still advancing, and then also Buildings, the City Hall reconfiguration, and the City Hall HVAC project that is advancing.
What's the status of Footsall, just wondered where that's at, since-
They had really pushed for design to potentially build in 2017, and their, you know, I think their vision and looking at what the design really takes and the engineering of that, the costs, were becoming somewhat prohibitive, so I believe, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're really trying to detail the engineering design to meet with the donor's gift amount.
So we have looked at about a 50% design, and in terms of what they really want, it's come in higher than what the donor has proposed, so they're actually looking at starting a fundraising campaign to really get that optimal that they want. So we've met on that, and we're waiting to get there 95%, and we'll probably get that sometime in the beginning of the year, because we're really hoping to be able to go out to bid and do that work this summer.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, well, see here, we were perfect slide timing, thank you. Are there any others? We do, I think- We do, I think Julie has mentioned to me a lot recently, she's been looking at Shea Park really closely and getting excited about working on that piece more and more.
I have a question, Katie. You know, in these parks, I look at the park projects that, that we've, you've shown here, and I don't see Bloomfield Park in there anywhere. And it's one of the pocket parks that's kind of in need of lots of stuff. I mean, you know, it's, it exists, the fence is okay, but the, the equipment and the grounds are probably one of the poorest, right behind Ennis Park.
You are absolutely right, and it should be on the list. And I think we just need to add it to the list, but we do have, and as, as funds are available and as time comes available, we will, that's definitely one of the priorities as well. So I think we can add that to the list for sure.
Thank you.
Anyone questions?
I had one more question for Nature. Do we, you know, that, that Hawk light for Samo, I see you got $90,000 in there and say that it's completed, but we're, we're still working with the push button for the pedestrians, right? At this point?
That is correct. On the report that you have, that, that's incorrect. On the slides, we corrected that. So that's not a Hawk completed, we just completed the flashing light. That's the one we have on the 7th Street, the same crossing is on Little Two Trail right now. In future, you know, if Caltrans keeps their promise, we will put Hawk. But the cost of Hawk is that we cannot afford right now, that that's the reason we put that light.
Sure. So Caltrans hasn't backed off on their promise, at least at this point.
Well, they were supposed to give us money six months ago, but then.
Right. It's Caltrans, right?
Yes, I don't have a check, so we cannot wait. So that's why we did that.
Sure. No, no, I understand. We had to move with our project, but in the long-term, Caltrans, it appears like they're still committed to the Hawk.
Verbally, yes. You know, unless we get in writing, no, I don't have anything in writing. Verbally, yes, they support that and they want to fund that, yes.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a picture of one of our new bridges.
A reminder, this is a photo of one of our new bridges on the Ridge Trail. And I know that there's ongoing work occurring, and Mark, if he was here, he could probably comment more, but you will see more activity on some of the forest projects. What wasn't noted on here, but I did note it in our budget, we are still looking at partnering with, on acquisition for the SPI or the Forsyth Properties. So there is ongoing partnership with HSU, and we're always looking at all the forest And our 91 activity is kind of our last activity here, but there's, each year, money is set towards capital for the ADA improvements on the bus routes, so any of the bus stops or sidewalk ramp entrance pieces. So these were the highlights of, we could spend days just reviewing, but these were all the projects that are either completed or set to be completed in this fiscal year. Our Bay Trail and the Crossing, Greenview Park, and then we noted Buttermilk and South Age. Buttermilk, I was really impressed with. It was, for me personally, I don't always think paving could be that sexy, but there's really beautiful. It is. And they were able to get a lot of utility work done in the same, at all the same time and work with all those property owners, which is amazing. We noted the cameras, Bayside Lift Station, and we were also able to do the removal of old Tank 9. So not only was your new panorama Tank 9 brought online, but there was extensive work to get the old Tank 9 decommissioned. Our street paving and slurry of West End Road and Gentoli, that we're on track to purchase the building and planning permit software and get that implemented. We're on track with our lighting upgrades, the re-roofing projects, and then we are scheduled for ADA intermodal improvements at the transit facility. Our hind and well assessment, just continuing improvements and maintaining equipment in our SCADA systems. And then we wanted to note, again, the acquisition with the Mad River section of Carlson Park, that's really going to allow more community planning, more work in parks, a Ridge Trail Bridge, and then our, we'll be working towards a contract for the pre-design and engineering on the treatment plant. And then this is our laundry list for multi-year projects. So I will not read through all of them. They are, all the projects that you have identified and we've been working towards that will continue into 18, 19. So that is the bulk of our presentation. Again, this was about making sure these projects are familiar, making sure there's a way to, you know, a vehicle to provide the detailed information and keep it in a succinct format. And this would be coming back to you at an, you know, annual or at mid-year, so that there's this back and forth and updates.
When, when you're talking about, I noticed you have bridge lighting in here, and are we talking about the pedestrian over process 101? And, you know, like, when's that happening?
We're, I'm working with Jess, our new engineering technician, or I should say, are on his way to becoming a professional engineer. He passed one of three exams just recently, which is good. He's trying to set up a meeting with Caltrans to discuss the options with them. He's looked into what we call the Type 1 lighting, where we would put some big, high towers up in there and try to shone across both sides. The towers would need to be very high, and that's what I always kind of said, they're going to have to be high towers in order to get, you know, it's usually a two and a half to one kind of relationship. So we want to meet with Caltrans before we start putting up 40-foot-high poles out there, and we need their blessing regardless because of the right of way, and we will be utilizing their power. So that should happen sometime, hopefully next week. We don't have the contact we used to have with the old electrician there, and one of the contacts we kind of lost with the, with the loss of, not loss, the retirement of Mark Early. But we'll get our contacts back up with Caltrans, because it's going to be a Caltrans, there will be a Caltrans approval, because we'll be on their property.
Right, and you know, it's, it's an issue with students.
Oh, absolutely. No, we.
You know, it's, it's kind of like bubbling up.
Yeah, and we do know it, and we've brought this up probably for two years, I would say, with Humboldt State at the Liaison League. And, and we did a, we, a long time ago, met out there to discuss drainage and lighting when there was a drainage failure with Caltrans and talked about, could we do these lights? And we ended up taking the step towards trying to upgrade the lights on the bridge deck. And my opinion, it wasn't very successful. It was costly, and we just don't get the amount of light that people seem to want to have to, you know, have shone upon there. The one complication, I will tell you, is the last thing we ever want to do on a Caltrans structure, is touch the structure. And, and if, if we get into an issue where the lights need to be so high in order to get the true illumination, to where you're not looking into a, an LED burning your eyeball out, that you will, we would need to do something on the structure. So I'm going to do everything I can to avoid structures, because that's an immediate, add six to 12 months onto it, because we're going to need a state bridge guy to kind of come in and, and tell us how we're going to have to do it.
Do you know, has there been any kind of temporary lighting put up on the bridge? I felt like I drove by it a couple weeks ago, and it looked, just at a quick glance, it looked like there were lights on it.
There are, the lights are on it. Yeah, it's lit. It's lit to what was the, the requirements at the time those were put in. We did a retrofit for efficiency, and we thought better longevity, you know, it wasn't as easy to destroy with a baseball bat. I haven't been up there in a while. I was actually thinking about, you know, one of these nights, I need to go take a walk and see how many lights are, because we've got to call back our light person who fixes our lights. And we, we have quite a list of lights that I've been noticing that are out, so those are one. He's the only person that actually knows how to work on those. I don't even think anybody at Caltrans knows how to get into those, that facility any longer.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Katie. So now we are at oral and written communications. So this is, time is provided for people to address the council or submit written. Oh. So this is the, after the council meeting, basically, this is the time for oral and written communications. So maybe I don't need to read it. If you just, you get three minutes.
Thank you guys for listening. I'd like to thank you a lot more of you guys take some action out there for the emergency shelter that we need. Lastly, you talked about the United Nations, the Declaration of Human Rights. We're about the only major country in the world that hasn't signed on to it. So it kind of, it kind of came as a shock tonight when you mentioned that, and I look forward to the day that, as a nation, we do sign on to it. The Human Rights Commission, I noticed there was a gentleman here with him. I've been up in front of him two or three times in the last 20 years. And they have no enforcement ability, all they are is advisory. When some of the people in the Human Rights Commission try to act, a lot of times the supervisors dismiss them. They're there and appointed at the supervisor's pleasure. So they have no enforcement ability, they're a talk-talk, and, and that's unfortunate. We really need a human rights advocate, a department of human rights advocate that has some kind of bite. And right now, I've still got a little bit of time, so I'll waste it. Right now, tonight, I'm going to go back down to a church that they let us sleep on a breezeway. It's cold as hell. The other morning I woke up and there was ice on my tarp. A lot of the, we had about five men sleeping in this breezeway. They wouldn't even get up to use the bathroom, almost, it was so cold. I was very fortunate, I had a friend that let me come over to her house and take a shower and rest. My doctor says, I need a lot of rest, and I'm not getting it being homeless. And I've got my bedroll out there, I'm going to go roll it out, climb in tonight, and look forward to a hell of a cold night again. The last thing is, please, declare an emergency. You guys got this power. Funding will come about. You can call Sacramento, call the representatives. There's land available all over town, 11th Street, the big field there. There is no reason on God's green earth why a temporary emergency camp area and shelter be erected and put in place. So far as declaring an emergency, you can have it for a certain period of time and then renew it. This is allowed. Talk to the supervisors and tell them to declare a housing and shelter emergency. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing that, I'll close public comment. Okay, so now we're on to council and staff reports.
I'll just be quick when we do our dates of future meetings, just a reminder that the meeting, A, the election of the mayor and vice mayor, has been moved to 8:00 AM on the agenda, it's written at 10:00. That's it.
So I guess, council reports?
Yeah, I, I just will report from HTA that on Monday, we're going to meet in Garberville again to consolidate the two Southern Humboldt routes into one and make it a little more efficient and some better weekend service down there. So I'll be going on Monday to Garberville with HTA.
And how is it doing as far as meeting its Fairbox ratio?
That one down there, I couldn't tell you right off, but it is meeting it.
Do you have anything you want to report, Councilmember Winkler?
No, I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Watson?
Tomorrow is the Chamber Mixer, it's at the Alkami Distillery, and at 5:30, I think. That's it.
Where'd you say it was?
Alkami Distillery, which is a South G Street?
Yeah, okay, thank.
We had another student safety forum meeting on campus last night that Mayor Ornells was at as well. And so that was really just focused on, you know, what can we be doing while this, while students are on break? What can we bring back? And what are some actionable items from all the different working groups? So that was, that was good to have kind of those breakout sessions and also get some students looped into the, to the work as well that's happening.
Yeah, that was, it was interesting. It was, it was nice to go to, and I guess we're rotating that. So I will be gone tomorrow, so our vice mayor will be mayor. I'm going to be gone for two days. I'm going down to Riverside to go to the statewide road charge committee, where we're looking at ways to develop funding for transportation that's associated more with the autonomous car and the electric car. And just future, I mean, there will be gas, it'll be overlapped to some degree. But anyway, I'll have more of a report about it once I come back. And then I just wanted to kind of thank the community for the thoughtful and well-researched history that I thought came out at the McKinley discussion. I, I was just happy to see that people had really put some time and energy into researching history and understanding that. And then I wanted to give a little report about, I threw this, I kind of hosted a dance party for the Bay Trail on November 30th. And I want to thank Brett, because he really was like the volunteer number one, he was fabulous. So thank you, Brett. And I want to report that we brought in $2,800 for Trails and had a great time dancing. So it wasn't too painful and made fair amount of money that was divided between the Trails Council and the Humboldt Area Foundation's Bay Trail Fund. So that's fun. And then, as our city manager just said, dates of future meetings, we have our special meeting to elect the mayor and the vice mayor. That will be Thursday, December 14th, and we've changed that to 8:00 AM. So make sure you're here. And B, a study session to discuss the Plaza on Monday, January 28th at 6:00 PM in the council chamber.
January 8th.
Did I, did I say, did I not say January 8th? Okay, I meant January 8th, 6:00 PM. And then C, we have a study session with the Forest Management Committee, Open Space and Agricultural Committee, Parks and Recreation, Wetlands on January 16th at 6:00 PM here in the council chamber. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.